All right. Good evening and welcome. It is Tuesday, June 14th, 2022. We are convened at the Provo City School District Board of Education. We're meeting at 280 West, 940 North in Provo, Utah. The time is 5:09 PM. We'll begin with a roll call. Melanie Hall, Board President.
Jennifer Partridge, Board Member.
McKay Johnson, Board Member.
Gina Hales, Board Member.
Carrie McKay, Board Member.
Nate Bryson, Board Member.
Derek Anderson, Business Administrator.
Peter Nelson, Superintendent.
And we'll excuse Rebecca Nielsen tonight, and Nate is joining us on Zoom. So is there a motion to convene?
I move that we convene study session.
Okay. I'm going to do a quick board training. On page 16 of our board handbook, it says, "Generally speaking, a board member will provide a report on a rotating basis once or twice a year in board meetings, dependent on the calendar and rotation. This normally takes place toward the end of the meeting. The parameters are: One, approximately three minutes in length; Two, addressing recent activities in the board member's official capacity; Three, addressing other important topics, funding legislative items, et cetera, that have been bearing on school district operations; and four, this is an opportunity to make a positive statement about board member duties and activity." So I just wanted to make sure that everybody on the board is aware of these parameters. We've had some board reports that have gone a little bit longer than three minutes, and this isn't really an opportunity to have an open mic and say whatever you want to, but it is an opportunity to let the public and your constituents know the things that you've been doing in the district. There shouldn't be any discussion of personnel during this time. That could have some legal ramifications. Thoughts? Yeah?
Well, we all serve on different committees, and sometimes we don't hear what's happening on the different committees. Unless those committees have a big item on our agenda. So I think this is a great opportunity for us to hear, you know, what other parts of the district that you've been working with, and we can hear as a board, as well, because in the handbook it talks about our constituents, which is important, but I think as fellow board members, just to learn from each other.
Hear what's going on from the other committees. I agree with that. The other thing is, is don't feel like you have to do a PowerPoint. That's not a requirement. A lot of times it's just give a statement about what you've been doing.
But kudos to those of you who have been doing that. And in the effort, you know.
But if we can try to stay within those parameters in the future. So, okay. Any other further thoughts or questions about that part of the board handbook? Good. All right, moving on. Policy update. I'm going to turn the time over to the superintendent.
Okay, for whatever reason, I can't seem to pull mine up at the moment, but... So, two policies. Made yet another change to align with information about the electronic communications policy. And if you do pull that one up, you'll notice two things. One is, we didn't get that change made that discussed last time about just describing a streaming source rather than creating YouTube. So that's in here. I don't think you have to feel like you have to act on that because you already did. We just didn't make that change. So that's going to happen after approval of this. And then because of the new law, the new requirement, it's part of the whole open meetings concept, that if the board is voting in electronic meetings setting, that the way the law is written, you may remember this, that if it's a split vote, then the board president has to go back and do a person-by-person of the roll call vote. We're thinking that rather than having the awkward moment about, "Well, did I vote that way?" Or, "Well, then maybe I should just change my vote," or any of those kinds of things going on, that we just, like tonight, with Nate being remote, that we would just, that Melanie would just call for a roll call vote on any items that are acted upon tonight.
So instead of just saying, "Although in favor," and decaying, I will, similar to like when going into executive session, you'll say your name and how about your vote.
You don't have to do that as the first step, but we may have to do that as a second step.
But that's only if somebody is on the...
Right.
And is the electronic voting not sufficient for a roll call if that's recorded, that's a login, that is us?
My understanding is that it is not. I can follow up on that, but...
It works for the legislature. They, I mean, a roll call has to be called as a roll call for public, but it's recorded and it's divided. They still can count. They know how everybody voted on any given thing.
All I can tell you is what Angie Stoll told us in the training as superintendents. So I can check with her.
But I thought, yeah, my understanding was that if you're voting electronically, because there's a record, everything is as a roll call vote.
I can find out.
We haven't done electronic votes since I've been on the boards over three years. Is there a reason why we stopped? Like, is it hard for us to do that anyway? So is it worth looking into, or?
This is, this came from the state that we have to have to...
That part. But I'm saying if we want to do electronic vote, is...
We were away from it because there's been, there was some glitchiness with the program, and it would just move the meeting along a little quicker.
Okay, but we could if we felt we wanted.
Yes, certainly can.
But also, a little glitchy to state your name.
It is, no question.
I'd say your name. I mean, if 80% of the votes were, "Okay, I haven't gotten it yet, let's do a roll call." We could always do that. If you can go back.
So do you want to hold on this change? I mean, I don't, it doesn't matter to me. I'm just trying to reflect with the law.
Nate, did you have a...
He's saying no.
So, but how does that work if we do, if somebody like Nate's on Zoom?
He can log into the meeting from anywhere.
He can still log in and then still do the vote from there?
He can log into Board docs and join a meeting and vote.
Okay. What do you guys want to do?
So it sounds like the right thing to do is just hold on this.
I mean, we can do tonight and then figure it out.
I think it'd be okay to vote on it tonight and then if we need to make changes. But you're, you phrase it how it was in the law?
Pretty much.
Yeah. So then it's just, does the law mean that the electronic one?
Does the electronic recording count as a roll call vote?
Exactly.
It counts to the public. It's going to show.
Well, do we want to say voting will be by roll call vote instead of voice vote? And then, does that make sense?
Maybe. That way, that way we don't have to change it if the...
Because Board docs also displays how you vote.
Yep. You're right.
It displays, and that's also in our meeting.
So, Bonnie, let's make a note of that. We'll change the last sentence to say by roll call vote, not by voice vote. And then that should meet both standards easily. You can approve it, and even if I get something back from Angie, which is different than what I've initially introduced you, we don't really have to choose this.
Yeah. It just can't, you know, appear on the recording like, oh, if it's divided, they need to know how every vote went, which gets recorded anyway.
Right.
If we just did it contemporaneously with the electronic system, I don't think...
But tonight, Nate, if you're voting tonight, then it will have to be roll call votes tonight.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay. All right. Thank you. The other one was the one that Melanie mentioned. And this was a draft. According to what's in law, the legal references, this was drafted by an attorney firm, and just was something that, I mean, in its current condition, it's probably in pretty good shape now. McKay, you mentioned that you wanted to maybe make an adjustment to this?
Well, I think that we should have a standard of how we talk about whether or not our direct reports.
It does stay on air. It will treat fellow board members, district staff, and members of the public with respect and consideration. So what Melanie has read to us another time was not this line.
But that could be an adjustment to our actual board handbook.
Yeah, to the handbook. That's where I wanted to adjust it.
That's where you want that one.
Not the policy. The policy is fine.
All right, is there any further discussion on this?
Yes. I am baffled that you spent a whole month creating this policy solely based on one board meeting. And I'm questioning, did any of the other board members even know you were creating it? And this kind of punitive policy needs to have input from the public before it's approved or not approved. Line six, misspelled principles. Line 11, what if a board... Does this mean we are not allowed to call out dishonest, unethical, illegal words, deeds during a meeting? It will make it difficult for the board to have accountability over money-receiving agents if they cannot be questioned because some people see that as indecorous. Line 21, re-rest is misspelled as reset. Line 25, how long does it take the board to have something has occurred, after something has occurred, to make a vote on it? Can they pass a policy and then retroactively use it to censure, fine you for something that may have happened months previously? Seems like there should be a specific timeframe within which the board has to vote. Lines 35 through 33 to 35, they need to be deleted. It's restricting speech. And this is all based on an opinion or perception because it can pretty easily be persuaded of the two-thirds of the board that something is offensive, even though it should be protected speech. Line 39 needs to be deleted. After last month's meeting, Melanie and Rebecca called me and immediately threatened me with a censure. You had prejudged me without giving all the information, and what the two of you did was unacceptable. Conversation implies a two-sided discourse, not a one-sided lecture. Therefore, this option cannot consist simply of one or more board members lecturing one outside of a public meeting. Line 45, prohibited from attending? Why is this even considered an option? They're effectively barring an elected official from performing their duties of office. This needs clear reason on why it has been added, and it has no limitations on the calendar duration or number of meetings that the board member is prohibited from attending. As an extreme, you could prohibit a board member from attending all meetings in perpetuity. Lines 48 to 49, where did option B even come from? There hasn't even been anything else about financial conflict of interest, and it suddenly gets thrown in. It doesn't make any sense relative to the remainder of the proposal. It should be removed. If financial conflict of interest is a pressing issue, write a separate proposed policy specifically about that. Line 50, it's same as before. Where did crimes come in? I thought this was about treating people with respect, not acting as law enforcement. Honestly, what crimes are you expecting board members to commit during an open public meeting? Line 52 through 53, the comment by Derek Marshall says, "We did not find much in the way of example of fines." Maybe that's because fines are overly punitive. Maybe they couldn't find examples of fines because penalizing with a fine isn't really appropriate for such a situation. Lines 53 through 54, it's not okay. There has to be an upper limit set for the fine, otherwise you could just say, "We're going to fine you $20,000." If any fine is to be imposed, the maximum should be the equivalent paid for the meeting. For example, if the board has two meetings a month, members pay $480, and they're being equivalent $240 per month meeting. So the fine cannot be more than $240. However, I don't think a fine should even be an option. It just needs to be deleted because the fine of any specific dollar amount is not an equal burden to all. Lines 55 through 56, it's interesting you actually spelled it out in words. The purpose of this policy is to punish and discourage. That's why you wrote it. But that isn't the justification you used at the beginning where you framed the policy as promoting board members to adhere to the highest standards of ethical conduct in lines three or four. In other words, you're trying to make this look good, but it's really about punishing me for one incident. Also, there needs to be something added about an appeals process. Overall, multiple misspelled words, vague, open-ended punishments, random disconnected ideas thrown in without justification. It just seems like this was wobbly conceived and drafted. It definitely needs to be heavily edited before it should be accepted. And the public needs to have an opinion about this as well.
Kay, is there other thoughts?
I think some of the points you bring up, like, are worth discussing. Do we want to look at individuals? I felt the way you were just going through it, it wasn't right to interrupt you, but if we want to work through it and say, "Is this good or not?" I think it needs to be a discussion together.
Up to you if you want to talk about it. Nate?
So, little personal story. It's terrible that I'm on Zoom because this is the kind of meetings I really like. So, I remember when I got on the board and I, because the first thing we did, Terry, was about me doing X super-long board reports. So, don't feel like it's all about you. It's also all about me. But I'm gone, so you guys won't have to listen to my long board reports anymore. But I remember Jim, Jim, he was upset with me. I can't remember what I did. I'm sure I said something stupid. He wasn't used to my style yet. And I, being a lawyer, I went in and I read the entire handbook to see if there's anything that he could do to me for making the terrible thing, doing the terrible things that I was doing. And I saw that there was absolutely nothing that the board could do to me until I had free rein to be as insane and do whatever I wanted. And I very much enjoyed doing that research. So I think, I think there are some issues about free speech and appeals process, but that's why we throw this out. We have this discussion because I think there definitely needs to be some, some kind of stick. And, you know, you can't get in trouble for things you've already done in the past. You can't pass a law to punish someone for what they did against, they did previously. That's against the Constitution. So don't think that this is, this is any kind of thing being passed to punish a past action. I'm sure it just came about because we realized there is, there's nothing in our rules that, that can hold a board member to a certain level of decorum. Now, we need to decide what rules we want and what level of decorum we want, but it's not a personal attack. It's just Melanie discovered what Jim would have discovered if he had decided to keep going and keep bringing his comments up to me. But we would have had that discussion. So I just wanted to bring that out.
Okay, so other thoughts? Do we want to table this for tonight, or do we want to move forward with it? Do we want to make different changes?
I don't, I don't think it's ready to be, to be voted on tonight. I think it's, I think it's fair to post it on the website as under consideration. I think that we, we, you know, just in, in terms of other things that happen in school meeting, I think it's a good policy to investigate because there are consequences. And I don't want to, and we tend to be talking about one meeting last month. And so, you know, anything else I would say, I would probably go, "That's executive session again." And we need to do that in executive session to talk about any, what the consequences are. But there are real consequences, and there are tax, not, you know, there are taxpayer consequences, and there are liability consequences. So having a policy where we can understand this and we can feel protected because, you know, one of the first things that they, that they, when, you know, I'm sure that USBA is getting ready for that new board member workshop that they haven't had for a few years. They used to have the Marriott, and one always got my attention was that, "Oh, by the way, this is your personal liability. This is your homeowner's insurance." All of us. We got to take that risk a little bit. If somebody wants to go, "This is a misuse of funds. This cost me, and this goes on my personal liability insurance." We just, we just need to just think about it a little bit. And so I think it's, we do need to discuss it and get it to the right spot.
Just to add, like, so we have a board handbook that's for board members. It talks a little bit about some of these principles. And we have our board goals, and goal five is teamwork, professional conduct, and stability. So we have that kind of, this is who we are, but we haven't had this in policy yet. Like, I think policy, whatever our policies are for all different things, right? That's how the public knows what's important to us. That's what guides our actions as a framework and also legally and things. And so I do think it's important to have it in a policy as well as these other places that we, that stated some of these things previously. And I do feel, I've learned, as I've learned more about other districts around, like, a lot of districts, any policy, they have a first reading, and they never approve it the first time, the first month it comes out. And so I do think it's wise to, this was our first reading, and let's see what needs adjusting and changing. But I think the overall principles of, you know, the way that we treat each other with dignity and integrity and confidentiality. You know, I think all of these things are important, and we should definitely work to approve this in the future after we've revised a little bit.
Gina?
Have we looked at other boards and what they're, do they have something like this?
And we're still trying to find all of it.
Okay. Because I would love to see if other boards, and I can reach out to someone I know on another board and see if they have any.
Terry, I assume you were reading a list there, prepared remarks? If you were, can you email it to me? Because I think those are what going through with the attorneys.
Okay. Okay, so what I would suggest is that this is our first reading of this as a board. Send your changes or things that you would like to have questioned to keep, and then we can bring this to another board meeting. Okay? All right. Any other thoughts on that? Okay, let's move on. Construction update, Terry.
Do you have a policy? Well, so I can project. I attached it to it in Board docs.
So you can talk.
I'll let you do that.
So what was that, sorry?
I'll let you do that.
Okay. All right. I can do that.
Do you want me to try?
Well, I got it. It's, there you go. Okay, perfect. All right. So...
Are you going backwards?
There we go. Okay. So the June 14th construction update. So Timpview right now is moving along at an okay pace. They, right now, the big thing we're dealing with is concrete. Concrete is not coming in like we need it to. What's happened is, is there's a plant that, there's two plants in the state of Utah that provide the concrete powder and the mixture to, to the other facilities. And the one that's just south of us went down, and it was about, for about a month. But they got it up and running. They got it fixed. Problem was, is like, two days later, another part broke, and it went down. And it's going to be two months before they can get that part ended up and running again. So while we would like to be pouring about 100 yards a day, we're currently pouring anywhere from 10 to 15. So it's, it's got us a little behind schedule right now on the Timpview project. It hasn't impacted us anywhere in the financials yet because everybody has promised to hold the pricing that we've currently already got in place. And so luckily, we're not going to hit with any cost escalations yet that we've seen because everyone's promised to hold. But right now, the, the big thing that's been going in is the block walls. They've been putting the block walls in to, for the terrace that they're on that backside of Timpview, and it's, it looks really good. The other thing that they're doing is they're starting to put, pour the concrete floors, like, the second and third floors to the academic wing. Those are starting to be poured. So that's right now, the bulk of the focus is on the academic wing. All the helical piers have been, are installed throughout the entire project. There's no more helical piers that need to be done. Right now, the budget is still, still on, is kind of sufficient that we originally discussed with the change orders that have been in place. So Wasatch right now, the big thing with Wasatch is, is they're trying to design the school to determine, you know, do we need to address and design the school around the ditch? Or do we need to, are we okay to go with the current existing design and where the property is located? And so there's a lot of dirt worked, a lot that's going on up at Wasatch. You know, you can see the city's been pulling dirt. They've moved a ton, ton out, and they're working kind of on the grading for the site prep. That's, that's the head gate right there that you can see that, of the water coming in for that canal. That's the other side, the exit on the other side of the property. So you can see, it's really kind of just overgrown, and there's really not anything going through there. Shoreline Middle School is kind of going through the same process.
That's not a new school, is it?
That is a new school right there. I think that's the old, original 1901 school. No, but they're going through right now and demoing the property, grading the property, and just kind of clearing everything for site prep. They've removed a lot of the old baseball field pieces that were still left there. There were some bleachers and some fencing and stuff like that. So there's just a lot of cleanup right now that's happening on that property. So that, that's kind of it for the, where the projects are at. The design's still moving forward really well. And there's still, you know, there's, these, the Shoreline and Wasatch, you know, were still slated and everything's okay. That was one of my questions was, was to all of our construction teams, was with the Timpview concrete being, having such a hard time, is it going to have, cause us issues on concrete with Shoreline and Wasatch? Because I was quite worried about that. Because if the plant was down for a little bit, what was going to happen? Based on conversations with the concrete contractor and the concrete manufacturer, they're, they're, don't see any problems. They still think we'll be able to meet the needs for these two schools when the plant comes online and get Timpview back up and running and on schedule. So, and with no escalations. They've guaranteed the price that we've currently got so far. So it was, it was a nice, nice bit of news with all this gone on this last couple weeks, so.
Do, you know, when they'll be done with the site prep and start doing the actual, like, "Okay, now we're going to do..." like, hey, now we're gonna build Shoreline.
Shoreline, I believe, the groundbreaking is planned on the, some of the building stuff in September is what I believe. Now, that's approximate.
What date will the neighborhood meeting be scheduled for?
So I, my question on that is, so, right now, my neighborhood's under renovation. The city didn't give us any notice, they just came in, started tearing up driveways, started tearing up sidewalks and everything. To try to have a neighborhood meeting to say what our construction timeline is, it will be irrelevant almost the second we give that out. Because as you can see with TIBU, right, we aren't getting concrete. And so what would have been planned, it, the best we would be able to do is say, we're gonna be under construction and there's gonna be a lot of changes between now and in the future, when the project's finished. Because to try to say, this is when this is gonna be shut down until it's like a week or two before, just isn't in the realm of reality. And anything we give people right now will set an unrealistic expectation of when they can expect things to be done and then we'd just be letting people down that when it didn't happen.
It's not of our hands.
Exactly.
Is that neighborhood, Terry, you probably know, are they having regular neighborhood meetings?
Yeah.
That we could just go to one of them and just kind of lay out the plan or anything?
But they're very active. So the neighborhood chair was specific about wanting to know the deadline or timeline.
We could easily post the Gantt chart of when our construction timeline is, but still that's changing all the time. And it's not because of what happens during the construction project. And so I fear that whatever we put out there as an expectation of, hey, this is what's gonna be going on with the project, all it's gonna do is lead to frustration because the message will be outdated almost immediately.
What, do we publicly, in general, more general?
If we go general, that's.
I think, I think that that's where they, also, I think the neighborhood meeting to collect information, to give information, are there things we should know? Are there considerations that we need to, I mean, I just, we need to, we seem a little behind in that.
Okay, and I, we can do that. I've never been a part of the neighborhood meeting, I've never, so I don't know how they've been in the past, so.
I mean, you can.
Things changed because of COVID. They were online for a long time.
Yeah, and I think that's, you know, just explaining, okay, this is, this will be the information flow process, this is where we're at, this is what we're having trouble with, this is our trouble with our timelines, this is what our goals are and what we're trying to do.
There's pictures that look like I've done, like, I think that creeped us a little.
Just getting that, are there things that we need to know? And then how, how do we pass on, you know, feedback that we're getting?
You could also coordinate with Karen DePauw from the city council office. Although they are moving into the new building in the next week or two, so I don't know if her phone is gonna be connected yet.
But those points of contact are important to establish and sharing the information that we do have and, you know, seeing things are squishy and why, when it's squishy, also.
I wonder if we keep the, if we keep the neighborhood chair in the loop? I don't know, I'm not opposed to posting them either, especially with general, more generalities, but maybe even just having a good, I don't know who it would be, whether it be Terry or Karen.
Brian Taylor's the current neighborhood chair.
But I don't, I mean, as far as who would communicate, but if the neighborhood chair is at least, not, I mean, not a specific, I don't know, but I think if they have some general ideas, if we don't want to post it online.
Or even some documents that they can share.
Right, right.
I mean, you know, when they get asked, they're gonna get asked some questions and they can say, well, this is, you know, and you, it's great to use words, you know, in front of dates, like, hopefully, intended, so they, those are all.
Fall of this year, yeah.
Hopefully, fall. Of this year.
Barring any issues with the concrete plant.
Yeah, so.
Or another plant falling down.
Okay. I will work with the construction team to get theirs, how have they been set up in the past? Is there, is somebody that, or is it just we send out an email or a flyer to that neighborhood saying, come here to this date? Or do they, is there already a structure?
The neighborhood will have a meeting.
Yeah.
Then he would be part of their agenda.
Who's the neighborhood, do we know who the neighborhood chair is?
Brian Taylor.
Brian Taylor.
But coordinate with Karen DePauw.
Because they might make that more of a regional, several neighborhoods in areas.
Yeah, Purple Bay has a brand new neighborhood chair, I forget where her name is. And then Fort Utah has Jonathan Hill as the new chair. And then Lakewood is Becky Bogdan. But their 500 West, the south part of 500 West is already under construction right now because of housing conflicts being lifted. So that's why people really want to know.
What the tunnel is.
Because the construction company did not tell anyone that the road was being blocked off for a couple of weeks.
Okay.
Or one person complained because the construction company put equipment on her front yard without telling them. And she walked out the door and went, want the crap? Yeah.
Well, I think we have enough space, we don't have to worry about that one.
Yeah. Any other questions about construction? All right, moving on, fraud risk assessment.
Okay, yeah, so there's a fraud risk assessment form that's been attached to board docs. That is a requirement that is, that we go through from the state auditor. It's a new requirement, not this year, but it was new last year. It was just a questionnaire that we need to fill out, you know, what, what do we, you know, to see if we have any risks. It's not to say that there is no fraud, but it shows that we are doing things to try to mitigate fraud, right? We can't, you cannot eliminate it at 100%. It's just not possible, but you can do things to try to mitigate it. And so this is a questionnaire that we have to go through that is then given to the board and the board has to adopt it so that way, and we give it back to the state auditor saying, yep, the board has seen it and signed off on this, so.
I was gonna say, this looks familiar, like, we looked.
Yeah, we did.
Last year, so last year was the very first year.
Okay.
Looks like we did well?
Yeah.
Yes, very well. That's right.
Good job.
A decade's passed, we've made the paper, so I think some of the standards have been written for us, so we might have an uncharacteristic.
Okay, any further discussion about progress? Okay, attendance update, Doug Finch.
Thanks, I'll try and be succinct, knowing that you've got a tight agenda tonight, but I just wanted to, again, we've had this communication for about attendance policy and about compulsory attendance coming back online again for the 2022, 23 school year. So just to give you an update, we've spent some time in council, we've spent some time in my department, communications team, and I have worked at length to try and also know that we need to probably couple this message about school matters, come back to school, but also that school is safe, school is secure. There's lots of features in place that help it be a safe, secure place, but also there's lots of individuals that are there to support and help you to feel safe and to know how to navigate all the things that are associated with being safe in school. There are plenty of studies out there that talk about what are the things that detract from or make individuals not want to be in school, and it's surprising particularly at the secondary level, what are the top things that come back as feedback is they don't feel the school is necessarily a safe place to be? That's not the number one reason, but it's up there in the top. Oftentimes, it's saying that school is safe and secure. So we have been working at length over the past couple of weeks, particularly in life, and some of you board members have been passing along to us concerns from your constituents about the overall feeling about safety and security within our buildings and so forth. So just this afternoon, I believe, in working between our department and Caleb's department communications, we did send out a release with some good information, some guidelines around things that we're working on and things that we'll continue to emphasize as we move into the start of school again. We're not seeing this as just kind of a singular effort, but over the course of many weeks and even months, participating with our community, with our schools, identifying how we can make sure that going back to school not only is a welcome and an expected thing, but it's also a safe place to return to. And so that's some real good faith effort we're trying to do. The superintendent has directed me, as far as it relates to the hard policy and procedure, I think it's based on, again, on some feedback from our last couple of months, as well as communication he's had with the board presidency about reconvening a study committee to really look hard and long at our procedures around attendance. And there are some differences both within the state guidelines and code around elementary versus secondary, as well as we know the developmental needs of kids and their families, you know, ability to transport them to school as opposed to them driving to school. It's just two different things to have an elementary and a secondary school procedure. There's a lot of carryover between the two, but we've benefited in the past of having two different procedures, so we're going to continue to work that direction. So we'll convene a committee that'll begin stakeholders from within the school district. We'll invite those, I know a board member too has expressed some interest in being engaged in that dialogue. One of the first things that we want to do, and it's based on, I think, feedback that you've also offered in previous board meetings, is to take a really hard look at where do we stand in terms of pupil accountability and attendance state code that's changed quite dynamically over the past decade, specifically in the last two or three years, there's been quite a bit there around reasons for absences, excused absences, et cetera, et cetera. So we want to really make sure we have a sure footing of what the environment is, the playground around which we're gonna be working with attendance. So we'll be working on that in that committee. We'll also be exploring what best practices are out there. There's a lot of resources out there. There's a group that we've participated in the training in the past called Attendance Works that has a lot of great initiatives around not just what to do about your worst offenders with attendance, but how to really create whole school campaigns or drives to really encourage people to self-regulate and be aware of how much they're missing school and what the impact is for them educationally. So that's a campaign that we'll even launch as early as this fall in as numerous many schools as we possibly can in conjunction with this school safety initiative we're doing. We hope that as that committee works on a timeline of utilizing this next year to refine what's currently on our district policies and procedures for attendance, that we see ourselves having a policy to, at this time next year, have codified through an approval process that essentially sets the stage for us for moving forward for the 2023, 24 school year with updated procedures, utilizing again this next year to improve what we have. One other note I'll just mention is been a contributing factor to our timeline is that with compulsory attendance coming onboard, those agencies we work with, DCFS for educational neglect, or the juvenile court system for, for, you know, compulsory attendance violations, those agencies have been a little bit slow to jump to our responses to say, let's get together and talk about what we're going to do as the compulsory attendance is reinstated. There've been a kind of lack of returning phone calls, a willingness to me talking about how these guidelines around compulsory attendance would be re-employed. It's evident that there's probably been a bit of a reprieve. They've felt in terms of their numbers that are associated with enforcing attendance that they are, I think, trying to get their heads wrapped around the idea of re-engaging with this around compulsory attendance enforcement. So that's my report today. Just would then pause, see if you have any follow-up questions or insight that you'd give me.
Go ahead.
So I heard the word enforcement and compulsory and punitive, are we putting as, at least as much emphasis in communicating advantages? Whole time period of people saying, please have my kids in school, where we can say, yes, your kids are, you know, emphasizing attachment, making sure, you know, going along with some of our equity issues to make people, are they there because they don't feel comfortable? You know, you're finding, finding reasons for people to, you know, positive reasons that they should be in school and emphasizing getting, getting, you know, some positive reinforcement rather than just enforcement and punitive measures. Just maybe a part of our culture that our schools are a great place to be, we're gonna make them attractive for our students to be rather than just pure punitive. Are we thinking along any of those, those things?
Yeah, I think, McKay, you probably know it well enough that I can't help but think along those lines. It takes me a lot to kind of, to kind of eke out those words compulsory and mandate and exclusionary practices. You know, that's not our approach as a student service department or as Provo City School District. A very restorative inclusionary approach would be utilized. So thank you. I, oftentimes, when you talk about policies and procedures, it's kind of written for that 3% to 5%. They have to be there to say, well, then what happens if, kind of thing, it's definitely the exception, not the rule. But I appreciate in terms of our campaigning and our getting the word out and building that culture around PBIS and emphasizing you want to be back at school, certainly. I'll be sure to capitalize on some things you just mentioned. Thank you.
I mean, I mean, some of that is enforcement and it's just not enforcement as far as referral to DCFS. I think it's really important that we, we start articulating that when we're talking about enforcement, this is, you know, are you entitled to walk your graduation? Your attendance high enough? You know, that doesn't mean you don't get a diploma, but you get to celebrate us with us, you get to go and do some of these other activities that are not.
Exercise.
Yeah, are you, you know, do you represent our school in this athletic event and you represent our hopes for our attachment to the school every day? You know, those type of things, I think are, all right, so that is in between, but there's, sometimes I think when we hear compulsory and we're reaching out to this other government agency, juvenile justice system, I think we hear there's something else we can do in between about creating a culture of attachment.
Yeah, I really like that. And I think that we're, those are the waters that have shifted quite a bit in terms of what we can say is an appropriate absence and not, that will impact the things that we have in-house, like you talked about within our own enforcement arms. So that's where, particularly that study of what the legal landscape is right now, will be really insightful for us to know, and how far can we go with these types of things that might say, can you attach attendance to some of that participation? And I think we generally can, but a lot of that climate has shifted, as you well know, in the state legislature, around reasons why individuals can have an excused absence and how many they can accure before they have any sort of consequence given to them. So we'll really dig into that and Keith has again given me the approval to say, take our legal counsel that works with us and use those offices to help us really break that down, as well as the relationships that we have with our local county attorney and state attorney's offices to help us understand that landscape.
Yeah, I think one of the reasons why it comes across as kind of a punitive focus is because the term that I keep hearing from parents who are unhappy about this, as well as some principals and some teachers, is the word accountability. And accountability is, it does probably lean a little bit more toward the negative than the positive. So that's, that's one of the backdrops of what we're dealing with here.
You know, but in that, that culture, I think that we're in a culture of parental rights, there are school boards advocating parental rights. I really want to be in a position where if a parent calls a school, they say, my son is excused, there isn't another question. There's not a FERPA question, like, sick, do you really need health information? There, I'm the parent, my student is excused. But I'm really, what's the procedure to say, I'm really the parent? And then we can empower parents to do that, but then there are advantages for being in school, they don't.
Well, I will tell you that a parent you know well.
Yeah.
Has said to me many times, my son will not go to school and he knows that there's nothing to school or I can do about it. So there are parents who are actually saying to us, not, not give me a chance to excuse an absence, it's give me a way to get this kid to school. Maybe the positive approach is that carrot we're looking for.
And there, but there are lots of things. We, I mean, attendance policies, I mean, we can, somebody, you know, you cannot get an A with eight absences.
We'll have to, to get into those weeds of, like you say.
Credit is not denied.
Excuse is not excused, but can it impact?
Grades are not guaranteed. Grades are not guaranteed by anybody. Grades are powerful for lots of people, they're not for some other people.
I think McKay would be a great choice for this committee.
You just took the words from my mouth and I appreciate that. Well, someone with his background, right?
And can graduation be held to capacity?
We can't hold a diploma back, but everything else is.
Participation in the walking is optional.
Again, you're picking your battles as to what you really want to go to task with somebody on, right?
Some are pretty vicious.
So that's why, again, I think that we want to not necessarily ready, fire, aim with this. That's why, again, the time to really get those sorts of things, that we really stand behind some of those hard, fast decisions, we need to buy ourselves the time and get the input and the buy-in from our stakeholders, teachers and coaches and staff, as well as parents. And even to some degree, we can engage students in this conversation, we think, if we effectively do it.
There are some who would like to say to us, have something new in place for the fall. There won't be anything good new in place for the fall. If we don't do this the right and thorough way, but having the attorney advisement all the way through, without having the parents sharing their views on all sides of this and on and on and on, it just won't be done well. And we're trying to do this as well as a community.
And that's not uncommon ground as we survey all the other school districts. I've asked Jason to help me with that. Everyone's kind of in the same shoulder shrugging, kind of like we're trying to figure it out kind of situation. So you're right, it'd be best to do it well than to have to undo and just lose an opportunity to, in good faith, try and engage the community in trying to do this right. Jennifer?
Well, it's funny you said that because I had just raised my hand to say something about, I would love to be the one to say, this should be in place by the time school starts because it's a year of our kids' education. If we're talking about a high schooler who needs that, like, hey, you need to be in school. It's one-fourth of their high school time, like, it's an important year. And so I get that it's summer and we have a lot of other things going on and it's not going to be in place by August 16th. But I don't know that we need a whole year either to get it in place. And we can start, once that committee starts coming up with ideas. I mean, there are things that we can start doing while we're still getting maybe some of the legal parts of that, those small percentages who are going to, we need to know exactly what we can and can't do. We can work on that, that, hey, this is the positive, this is why you want to be in school and start a lot of it before the year from now.
Yeah, that was part of my term of use campaign and trying to encompass it with other initiatives we're doing around safety and security, a lot of that kind of work we do intend to do. Kind of like back to the construction timeline, I'd like to say hopeful fall 2023. We'll have something in front of the board here to say, we're putting this firmly into place so that we know that certain things are going to happen. But in the process, can we identify some pilots, can we try some things? It'd be foolish for us not to try and foolproof some of our things with letting schools run with them and give us some feedback on whether it's working or not. Love that feedback, right?
Let them, here, you're going to hit the ground running in August. Here's some ideas even going into August that you can get started with, even though we don't have full whatever in place yet. I think principals would love to have some resources and tools to encourage people to, this is why you want to be here, join us, you know? We want you here and you want to be here.
Yeah, that's, hopefully that's not like the best kept secret in town, what you just said right there, right? We'll make sure it's not. Thank you. Terry?
Dixon, not this year, the last previous year, completely redid their PBIS. And they included students in the decision-making. So I suggest you include students in this committee and make sure you have some teachers.
Thank you, Terry. I'm very familiar with what the great initiatives that Dixon did. And you're right, the process made a big difference, didn't it?
It made a huge difference.
The buy-in was significant. Yeah, their numbers are pretty amazing to look at as far as, to some degree, attendance in general, but definitely on-timeness, like the number of tardies they deal with. Because they went to that effort you talked about, it's remarkable what they've been able to accomplish because of the process they followed. Thanks for that advice, Terry. And glad you know about that going on at Dixon. There's a lot of great things that have been going on there.
I got an email and so I went.
Thank you for the time. Any other question or comment or suggestion? We'll keep you up to date as things again continue rolling out.
Yeah, I mean, we'll want, I'm happy for anyone else to join me.
No, we probably will. I know Jennifer's expressing interest too.
Any type of policy, I'll be blunt, any type of, any type of sort of cultural policy affects, you know, our, well, it affects our vulnerable culture.
Oh, yeah. And I'd want you to bring that lens, for sure.
And we got it, we got it, we have to, I mean, we have to be careful.
Unintended consequences, like you say, if it's just kind of thinking this is a one-size-fits-all. So that's kind of sophisticated thinking, it'd be really welcome, appreciate that. I'll get back with you and we'll continue, I'm sure, have this conversation as you allow it to be on your study session agendas.
Thank you, Doug. All right, next, we're going to talk about the committee recommended K-26 ELA curriculum program. I'm going to turn the time over to Ann Marie Harrison.
Thank you. How can I know we meet monthly with a committee of teachers in three subject areas in a part of a curriculum review process? This is aligned with the state's order of education standard review cycle. So as they review, standards are going to be given anyway, and we have teachers and principals looking at those to determine what new teaching materials may be needed. We've had our elementary team working for a couple of years now, and they are recommending that we adopt the use of the Wonders. That's one of the home of known publishers, as our comprehensive elementary ELA, English and Word program. We continue that with 95% group core, which is a supplemental program we've had for phonics and phonemic awareness. We put that in in the last two years and are seeing just today, we're asking really promising results. Our numbers in K-3 may be getting, our student progression and reading may be back to pre-COVID levels, which is really encouraging. We think that may have something to do with it. So the first part of what I'm asking today is for your approval that we adopt this curriculum program. The second part of it, obviously, join it to it, is the purchase of that program. You're on a seven-year standard review and curriculum review cycle. We can only purchase programs for five years. So what you have before you is almost $800,000, even the record. You have the invoices or the buy guides there to purchase the Wonders program. You'll note that we do have one school, Hittin' Elga, who we would be getting that program for them in Spanish, not in A's, but the same ones that teachers can plan distinctly and together. Do you have any questions on either of those requests, J or K?
I do. Are the teachers on this committee from each grade level, K-3, 6?
Yeah, we have teachers on every grade level and teachers from every school.
And anyone, who else is on the committee besides the teachers?
We have teachers, we have administrators on everyone, we have district leaders. So for instance, on that committee, we have our director of Title I and Title III. We have our language arts specialists. We have, trying to think of the third question. And our curriculum director, G. Rose, who has been on that committee this year. We don't, we don't, on the regular committee, however, by policy, when that committee is in its adoption year, for that period, it does become one. We did invite, by policy, we invited committee members. We had an interesting conversation about that. And this was data, you, let me share broadly, we had invited five people to be on that committee. These are members of the community, parents of our students. We have two people who agreed to join that committee. We then, as by practice, every time we get materials like this that we may want to adopt district-wide, we hold an open house where all teachers in the community, all administrators, all parents are invited to come review the materials. The publisher lays out their displays of all of them. And we get feedback from each of those communities on that. So the committee can look at the feedback from those three groups. Interestingly, this time we got one parent's feedback. So that's the only way we have to measure, but we have one citizen from the community, non-teachers, non-principal candidates, feedback from those three.
So did you say that this was not previously district-wide?
Actually, it is the current program. It's a new review of it, so it's published and updated every few years. So this is Wonders 2023, I believe, and we have two older editions incoming this year.
And using this curriculum, we're seeing some improvement?
I mean, it's really hard to, you know.
You mentioned the supplemental thing is what.
Right, right. Oh, the supplemental thing is okay.
Supplemental material, other teachers, so you'll remember this year, our K-3 teachers have been going through state training from the state called letters. And that has really aligned with the phonics and phonemic awareness instruction they've been getting. So again, I don't know how to identify which variable did what, but we're happy with what we're seeing.
Thank you.
And this is aligned with the state philosophy around the science of reading that they're trying to get out to educators broadly in the state, right?
Exactly. You may be aware that years ago, what was some people call the Mississippi miracle? Mississippi of the state really decided to reform education for students and I saw reading as the primary issue. They're the only state that has named such games, only made scores, they made 10 percentage games, a 10 percentage point game in a 10-year period, which is really bizarre in that realm of data analysis. So the state of Utah, other states have kind of gone after that same model, using that same professional program, letters, which, and then there's legislation this year, I think you were bringing it up, that is really trying to get our teaching force familiar with the new science of reading. And really, we could say that the three things, letters, the 95% group core, and we believe Wonders in a few iterations, really provides some good resources moving forward to do so. This was, I will announce too, this was a unanimous decision by the committee. I don't think I've ever seen unanimous recommendations by the members of the committee. But that does kind of demonstrate that it's a process. Well, you'll be seeing two motions come up, one to approve it for adoption or use and the second as a large purchase, again, at 758,000 dollars.
Any other, one or two items? Okay. I'll move on to the 2022-2023 sex education material review committee.
Thank you. So each year by law, the state identifies how sex education needs to be taught in school. And it's a very, very outranged process and it outlines key numbers of that process. To do so, we have the need to have a sex education material review committee. The scope of that committee is very detailed in law, there to review requests of new curricula that might be coming from outside vendors or new presenters that might be coming from outside. And they are to review some data, some identified data annually. The board is asked to approve that membership list. So you'll see the membership list. The committee needs to have more parent-represented community members than as employees. So you can see that on there. We ask everyone to think about this as, we ask the schools to think of it as a two-year assignment. So you'll see the first block of people on the table, that is their first year of a two-year assignment. There's a new group, there's the second year of a two-year assignment. And then one group is off the rotation each year. That's how we set it up about six years ago when we talked to the board about how to implement this. So this motion will be asking for your approval of that membership list. I should say that the principals submit those names, they work with their school community principals, and they submit the names from the schools. And then within the district, I work with individual students who are on second floor inside to fill out a certain law sheet.
I spoke to the Franklin principal and the Franklin representative will be changed to a fifth grade parent. Thank you.
We'll probably have to bring that forward too again when we get that, because we need to have that approved. But we'll absolutely do that, between the end of the way if you want, or we can go.
When it's later then? When it's their statute, we have to do it.
We're supposed to do it before the beginning of the school year. And I can say in the past, we've had to make changes just for different reasons. So in the future, I could bring it to something as a, would you accept the change?
So why don't we go ahead and we'll just pass it tonight and then when the change is done, we'll get that. Okay? All right. Thank you. Any other further questions? All right, thank you. All right, next, professional development days for 2022-2023, Jason Cox.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to be able to discuss this. Actually, Ann Marie has done the majority of the work on this. But I was going to discuss it tonight because it has, there's two portions to this. We'll be asking you to approve the calendar again for this next year with some changes that have been made due to our negotiations. So that's a portion of that. The other part of that is, we did want to adjust our professional development days that are within the school year. The first two would stay the same, there's an October date and a January date that were around holidays. The third date would now move to be aligned with this new change that had just happened with negotiations. So teachers had asked if we could have March 13th off as a no-work day in the negotiation process. And we would then put the professional development day on March 14th right after it. It goes in line with what we've been doing traditionally with our professional development days to try to back them up with other breaks or holidays to extend it for parents. The other part of that is that the reason to move it from the February date to the March date is to give teachers more time for implementation between the January professional development and the March professional development. So that was the reasoning to move it a little bit further out. So that's the calendar portion. Any questions on that?
I'm just curious, so I guess you explained part of the reason, but I know in the past when we talked about it, we had liked the February professional development because if you wait too long in the year, then you don't have time to implement it that school year. So I guess you feel like you found the right balance then between?
Right, and this is where I would defer to Ann Marie because of the teaching and learning portion of that. But yes, that's where that recommendation came from.
Yeah, thanks for my department. I don't know that we found that the sweet spot. Obviously, we'd like to talk about everything, but we've heard a lot of challenges this year, particularly with letters, but other teachers now in those PD days choose courses. And letters really chunks their coursework into four quarters. So to have one month to do all of that coursework was really pretty overwhelming when it ostensibly should be a quarter of a school year. So then we got the new March date, we thought this might be not a change to have the review back from several teachers. It always feels too late when it's not already done. And I, but I also have to think about, Lana, we are in a spring here. We have teaching teachers for years, not just one year.
The letters training, can you explain? Because I knew there was a big push this year, but it sounds like they're going to continue to have training in following years for letters?
So it's a two-year process. So teachers will be considering a second half of the year in conference course, a second half. The state put in some language into law requiring secondary institutions to have science of reading staff on staff and teaching. And we'll be requiring a science of reading assessment of teachers entering into those. So the state's intention is that they're in service, teachers for individuals can increase their ways to address this need to help teachers understand what's at stake. And again, I would say we made this request knowing what we heard from teachers and we welcome the way it's been.
Any other further questions or comments? Okay.
Let's have Ann Marie bring up on that. The other, the next item is about our negotiated agreements. And we have all three of those attached for you today. The process not really well. Again, I feel like we worked really hard throughout the year to try to not only have good relationships, but be working towards what can we do for negotiations? So that when the time comes, it's a process that people on all sides and all parts of the table can feel good about, work with us to be able to come to a quick and beneficial result for them as we go through that process. But if there's any questions, we'd love to answer questions. We're going to ask for your approval of those tonight.
I did. In all of the agreements, the steps and lanes were in wording. And is it possible to add a graph of what exactly the steps and lanes were? So people know where they are and what?
So we actually are going to be sending out?
Or is that an attachment to the agreement?
That's a great question. We post those after the approval, the steps and lanes. And we actually will be sending out. And we actually will be sending out and through an email to all of our teachers. The business department will be doing this. They'll be sending out the placement of everyone. It'll be an email that describes here's where you were last year, here's where you are this year. Not only stepwise, but the actual salary amount, base amount that that comes with due to the changes.
All right, and then?
Answer your question, sorry.
Well, it would be, can and I just get in the agreement or as an attachment to the agreement?
We never really made it an addendum unless we were changing it to kind of full scale, in other words, going to a new, new schedule altogether. Because it's an ongoing document. We use year over year. We, we just update it according to the percentage amount that we apply to it. So that's why it's not attached to the actual agreement, but again, I hope I'm answering your question. I know you're saying you'd like to see it. That's the reason why we haven't attached it.
Or just put it on four docs so everybody can see it?
Okay.
On page four for the P E A and the P E S P agreement, they're both on page four towards the end. It says there's insurance wellness, policy evaluation, professional development, and salary committees. But I don't think, I mean, I don't think there's a board member on the wellness, policy, professional development, or salary committees. So do they actually exist?
Yeah, they do exist. So we meet with the associations for all of those. We haven't had board members on them in the past because we, in our conversations with the board about when we come to the committees, they, in the past, have just asked H R to manage those committees, those portions. It's kind of an ongoing negotiation in each one of those committees. For instance, wellness is about our wellness program that then leads to how much our insurance renewal rate is. Insurance committee is very similar to that. Policy committee is monthly where we review policy with the, with the, with the two associations. And then if there's any changes, we take it to them beforehand to have them review before we bring it to the board. Trying to think of the other ones on that list.
Because when I was reviewing committees for other boards, all of these were listed, I guess, a board member was, depending on the the school district.
Yeah.
On, on, these were all listed as a board member being on some version of these committees. And I, I was surprised that we actually haven't, since we didn't discuss any of these in our last discussion about committees, so.
Yeah, we have had them ongoing. Years ago, and McKay can probably speak to this, we had board members attend portions of those, some of those, not all of them. The wellness is apparently newer committee, and so, but there was a point at which when, when the board goes through their committee assignments, they were taken off the list, basically just kind of given to H R to manage as part of an ongoing negotiation process. So if you want to review that again, we'd be happy to do so.
And also, do we hold a semi-annual state of district with the employees?
Yeah, we call it our liaison meeting, and we do have board members that are invited to attend that. We had some attend this year. And we do it twice a year. The first one is in October, and it's a state of the union, state of the school district, kind of a, a meeting where we check in on how the school year started, any concerns the associations have, kind of help us understand where we are with, with helping everyone feel good about the new school year. Then the second one is held in the end of February, and that one is usually Derek's team going over the annual budget that he is about to present to the school board, or has just, actually has just presented to the school board in the retreat, and what we're planning for the next year in our budgets. So it's just giving the associations an update on where we are there. And then if they have any other agenda items, they just get us, get them to us ahead of time so we can discuss them as a, as a whole body.
Now, I'm just.
Okay, so I thought I'd ask all my questions when I talked to you last week, but came up with one recently. So we have in the agreement, proposed agreement, how much we'd be raising for each lane. I'm looking at the support professionals. Do they also still move a step in addition?
Yeah, they do. So the step and then the money amount that's described in there is, is applied to the step that they do make in advance.
So we would add the new amount to whatever their step increase was going to be in?
Yes.
Okay.
So it's applied to the whole schedule and then they make the stuff sort of together, yes.
And then, well, I guess we can have everybody ask any more questions, but Melanie, I don't know if this is the right place. I did want to discuss a few themes with the board about.
Recession executive session?
Yeah, we can do that.
Okay.
So, well?
Well, I mean, anybody else have questions for me?
Yeah, besides, are there any further questions about this? Okay, let's move on, and then when Carrie comes back, we can do such.
Or we can finish this meeting and do it.
So, okay. All right, one eighty-nine ninety calendars. Alex.
Alex, the two of us?
Yeah.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity just to present to you the one eighty and nine ninety calendars. Every year, the board is asked to review and to approve prior to the new, new school year. There's state requirements around one hundred and eighty-day calendars and nine hundred and ninety instructional hours. For the past two years, the state has put in place a waiver for the nine hundred and ninety hours, and they've extended that into this next year. Nevertheless, all of our schools at the secondary level, I believe the elementary.
That is true.
I felt, we're holding true to the one eighty-nine ninety. So you're either meeting or exceeding the state minimum requirements.
Elementary is in the same vault. They have gone through, looked at all their dates, and made sure that it's matching what is expected by the state for the other one hundred and eighty days. And more than nine hundred and ninety hours. Most of the schools are well above the nine hundred and ninety hours. Which again, we want to maximize our amount of time in the country.
So this, this just past school year, we met those?
We did. There was one exception in the secondary where we reviewed, we were not meeting nine ninety, but we were under the state waiver, so it wasn't necessarily an issue for us. And that was at Timpew High School with construction. They had reduced the school day by five minutes.
Yeah.
And then actually dropped them below the nine ninety.
Okay. Is that going to be a problem next year?
No, because we worked with them to go back to the normal school start and end time, and so they'll meet.
I feel like I'm talking way too much. So you said most of the schools, so are they not all in alignment with the exact number of days and hours that they're spending?
So this is where there are a little bit different in hours, because for example, there are busing challenges, and we have to negotiate and navigate. And some schools don't have buses at all, and so they're able to be a little bit more tight on their, their beginning and start times. Whereas like at Spring Creek, they've added a little bit more time to their schedule to allow for busing to be able to get all the way out there and all the way back. So there's a little bit of variance in some of the schools in their hours.
For the secondary, they're all on the exact one eighty in terms of half days and full days. Any variance in the, in the hours is due to the bell schedule, that they're on different bell schedules.
But it's very minimal. It's not like extreme amounts, just enough to be able to accommodate some of the busing. For example, like Timpinogas doesn't have any buses, and so their schedule actually starts a little bit earlier and gets out a little bit earlier. But that accommodates that community a little bit better for you.
Okay, but there's not like a school that's just having extra early out days, others not having any?
No, not extreme, no.
There are a few extra early out days that schools have applied for. For example, they do like to meet with some of the schools at the beginning of the year and meet and do testing and then do some conferences with the parents at the beginning of the year that otherwise they wouldn't get till that particular teacher.
Thank you.
Any further questions?
I, I did. Since this is basically the same calendar as the professional development, do we need to, can we approve them together? Or do we legally need to approve them separately?
From my standpoint, I think it has to be, this has to be one approval, from what I understand. One, one eighty-nine ninety requires a specific approval.
Okay.
And I, I need to jump over that.
No, that's fine, no. Okay, any other further questions? All right, if you, all right, school assignments for the upcoming twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. So I went through and looked with the new boundary changes. I'm just going to list off, so these are the assignments for, I just am doing elementary only right now. Nate Bryson would be over Canyon Crest, or not over, but would be assigned at Canyon Crest. I would be assigned to Edgemont and Rock Canyon. McKay, you would be assigned to Wasatch and Provo Peak. Jennifer Provost and Spring Creek, Terry Franklin, Amelia and Sunset View, and Gina Timpinogas, Rebecca Westridge and Lakeview. If there are any concerns about elementary schools.
And this is based off the council?
This is based off of the new, the new map.
City council approved?
Yes.
I thought Provo Peaks was fifty feet into Jennifer's area.
Well, and so then that, that becomes part of our discussion, right? Because where are the people living that attend the school? They're in both boundaries, right? And same with Edgemont.
Edgemont, part of the line, part of the line.
And I'm sure over in your area too, you've got some.
So, I mean, Carrie, that puts you with three elementary schools. Are you still okay with that?
Yeah, they're just the same as we're doing at the time, so.
So then this brings up our secondary, and this is where we all are part of, like, we all represent the east side. We all represent Timpew, we all represent Centennial. This west side, you all represent Dixon and Provo High. Independence and District Drive, so would, do we want to take rotational turns on these?
Probably Independence for sure.
Because do you want, as like west side, do you want to take rotation for Provo High and Dixon?
Well, I'm saying specifically about Independence, it kind of, everybody from the whole district goes to Independence.
Right.
So that, that would probably be appropriate to rotate.
So is there a, a member here that would like to be assigned to Independence?
Well, I think first maybe, I think it's also important that we're balanced as well.
Right.
So I know we're about to talk about the middle and high schools, and I don't know what your feelings are on that, but I don't know that I necessarily want to always rotate them, because some of us already have two or three elementary schools and some have one. Like, I think a person who's only assigned to one elementary school, it makes sense for them to be the lead on some of the secondary schools. And not that they're the only board member that goes to those schools, but they could be the lead because some others have more elementaries that they're working with, so I don't know, what do you think?
I'm fine rotating, like, I think that would be nice too, but I only have one. So there, you know, if we rotate, which I'm fine with, there'll be years where I just have one school, which is great for me, but not so great for Terry, who's going to have three million. So I do think it makes some sense to have a lead. Like, I'd be happy to, I'd be happy to take whatever, I'll take whatever school. Because, yeah, there will be years where, if we rotate, there will, will be years where some will just have, like, your area, I believe, has a lot of, yeah. So you would have that, you know, on top of it. So I, I really, I can, I think I can be okay with any of it. But maybe we need to be talking to the districts that have a bunch of schools to see what, what you guys think, I don't know.
Is there any consideration for the secondary schools? I mean, so this, but is it, for board members, we have no power except as a board. And I, and it makes some sense that one board member of one elementary school, that's great for the secondary schools where there is so much overlap, that there isn't just some, some assignment of two board members to each secondary school, and if somebody can't do something.
If they can't make it to community council, then work out the?
Yeah, we're just, hey, can you, you know, are you going to be there? What's going on here? Is there any consideration of, of sort of doing that? And, you know, a little bit of rotation, but, but lightning alone, I mean, I would love to go back and, you know, I was quite involved with Independence at one point, event somewhere else, I'd love to, you know?
So maybe have one from the east and one from the west be assigned to Independence would make sense. I think that would be awesome for Independence to have, you know? A little representation from both sides.
Great.
Do we want to add in Adult Ed? Or any of our other?
The only other one I could think of would be East School.
Yeah, you have a couple of places to have locations. You've got a State Canyon and a State Hospital that are a location. Adult High is actually part of Independence' location code along with East Bay Post High. East School is a really small school, but it is its own location, its own accreditation, so.
So it's own accreditation, and it's sort of, we get more into the observer, you want them to be as free as possible. And they're, they really, especially Adult Ed, these are, it's almost like they're following the rules. It's not, it's not the same, same thing. So, you know?
East School's going to have a trust lens committee, it's going to have T S S A money, it's going to have evaluations, it's going to have special education requirement. So it's small.
Yeah.
It's half the size of Franklin, but it still has to do everything else that Franklin has to do.
Yep.
Then maybe with the schools that have a community council, maybe a board member should be involved with that. That we're supposed to be signing off on those approvals?
Sure. Should we sign those to the ones that have fewer elementary schools, or should we also rotate those?
I don't think so.
Either.
Either.
As one that only has one school assigned in my area, I would be fine with doing that, because the rest of you have a lot of schools. And so I would be, I, I enjoy meeting people, and, no, I don't, but sometimes, sometimes I enjoy meeting people. But I think, I think in order to be a little more fair with the load, it might be, I don't, I would guess you're, no, you're not the other one. Who's the, oh, Nate. Nate is, Nate's leaving.
Right, but this would be whoever.
Yeah.
That's why these are assignments.
He's still here.
He's abandoning us.
He's not gone yet.
They're still here, Gina.
So I, I don't know, I, something to consider, I, I would be willing to do that, and I'm guessing whoever would take his place might also be willing to do that, just to kind of even the load, maybe for East, East School the only one that we're looking at that is?
Just a question as to whether the involvement of the State Hospital and the residential treatment program, the State Canyon and, and Hope Springs. Yeah, thank you. So they're kind of combined under one supervisor, Travis Cook, so here's another location.
Well, we're already kind of doing that, yeah.
So I would say that I cover that on my committee.
Yeah.
We don't talk about, well, maybe we do. I, I don't remember conversations specifically about trust lens or anything like that, but I can be more aware of that. But I, I feel like I can, at least in my position now, I can cover that.
Any other programs that have trust lens?
I mean, I'm talking to Dallas, I know he oversees trust lens, but I think that East School and then the, then again, Slate and Hope Springs are unique in a lot of ways. But again, they, they do appreciate the visibility of what's going on up there. I know Travis is really welcome.
Yeah.
More engagement with what's going on there. You made a great report presentation this year. We've been really glad to be in front of you talking about some of those programs. So that would be just my ambition. I can't think of any others besides those two. I catch just, East, East Bay Post High and Adult Ed right now are, are served under Independence as kind of our structure. East Bay Post High and Adult Ed under Independence.
So just with Independence, that's currently the school that I, I'm, I'm working with Independence, and I have never talked to either of those other two schools. So maybe once we redo this, that might be something to add to the conversation.
Facilitators who all essentially kind of work underneath Jacob Griffin of the Red Cross School, so he's like, they're like.
So by talking to Jacob, then we're covering?
You're covering both of them.
Okay, then they're covered.
And remember as well that the other two schools have such an influx of students and parents with community councils, but there really isn't a lot they can do with trust lens, so just keep that.
Okay, so I'm going to just make some suggestions, and then you get some. For Centennial, it's Jennifer and McKay, one of the ones who finds that. And then Tiffew, Nate and I would be sending that one, so just coming through.
That's great.
Okay.
And then for Dixon, if we had Gina and Jennifer, Rebecca. And for Provo High. And then for Dixon, if we had Gina and, um, Jennifer, Rebecca, and for Provo High, Rebecca, because you're taking on east school, and Terry. And then Independence, Nate, would you be okay to be the east side for Independence?
Yes.
Congratulations.
Okay. And then west side, Terry, would you want to do the west side, or is that too much for you?
No, I'll do, fine.
Okay. Okay. All right. That sound good to everybody for those assignments? Sounds great. Thank you very much. Right, moving on. Did it go down time? Okay, uh, consent, consent calendar, are there questions on that?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead, Carrie.
Yeah, I told Derek I was planning on admitting my audit request to find out how long it takes from when a school requests something to be fixed to when it gets on the capital improvement list to when it actually gets fixed, but Derek, can you please explain why that is not possible?
So, um, to, to get a list right now that it's determined how long something's been in a work order system is not possible based on our current model, because what happens is, is if an employee wants to fill out a, a work order, they fill out a paper form, they submit it to their custodian. Custodian will then take a look at it and say, this is something I can do, this is something should go to maintenance, or this is, I don't think this is a reasonable request and trash it. And so, if, until that point, that's all paper, there's no real tracking mechanism, right, for the, any of that stuff that's in paper. Then once it hits the maintenance system, then that's actually a work order system, but it really kind of hasn't been used in, um, in, in the past, because what would happen is, is in the past, some, some work orders would get backed up to the point where they just, there was so many in the system that they couldn't get to a law. Um, and, and talking with, with Chad, the, um, because the, there's been a history of that happening, they would go in and just say, reset and purge the system and start over again, and that's happened about four times or five times. And so to try to get a true list of how long something's been in a work order system for, it's just, there's, there's not the data. And so that's partly why I've been pushing to say, let's get a new work order system that interfaces with the capital replacement cycles and things like that. It has approval chains to where the, the teachers or employees would submit it online, and it would route to who it should go to based off of the request and things like that. So that's, that's why I've been kind of saying, okay, we need to move towards that direction, so that's why it's not possible.
So do all those principals and head custodians know now to re-enter all of their requests?
I haven't sent that information out because, um, we've been trying to get somebody new up and running and online, and I've been managing the construction projects and schools out, so there's really been, there's been no, no, nothing that's been sent out to everybody saying, maybe you have a request recently, so.
I would really like a system that they don't just get purged.
Mm-hmm.
That's just a request for me. I just, like, that hits me very wrong. Well, we got too many, we're going to purge them, so I'd really love it if the new system did not do that. Thank you.
Um, I have a quest, a question from the warrant summary on page two. Um, the Infinity Tours and Events, is that the Dixon tours that are going on right now? Or?
That was one thing I forgot to ask on, that I, I will have to get back to the board on that one.
Because it, it looks like it, it would have been, because they're on their tours right now.
Yeah.
Um, what is Pro Maximo?
Pro Maximo is the weight room, uh, over here that we put in for Tempe, the eight grand view, and then.
Oh, okay.
At once the schools.
The temporary, yeah.
Yeah, correct.
Okay. And then are you huge or DEH Computer Systems, is the company that hires the substitute teachers? Is that the way it's worded?
No, that, that is wrong, sorry.
Okay.
That was done at like 10:30 at night, so.
All right, I was like, oh, I think that.
No, no, it is not, it is not substitute, it's, that is, that is.
Okay, just checking. Those are all my questions.
Okay. Any other further questions? Okay, um, the next one, upcoming people calendar items, uh, JLC meeting is on June 23rd, we have the USPA PD series coming up on June 23rd at 7:00 p.m., it's going to be Zoom. We were, most of us were, uh, the graduation for the prior one, and that's on their website if you want to watch it, so, prior to this. Um, we're going to have an extended study session on June 28th, uh, from 7:30 m to 10:30 a.m. up here at the district office. Uh, Reach Training, uh, Gina and I were able to go to the Reach Training last week, and it was fabulous, and I encourage everybody, if they can make it, to go to it on the 21st.
I meant to send out an invite, and I neglected to do that, so I will send out the information. Doug, can I count on you to send me the information? I will invite the board, or Melanie, I don't mean to use your.
No, go already.
But I was, I, I was tasked to let you guys know about that.
And I did not do it. We kind of.
Did you?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, everybody got an invite and, or asked for, and, and then I, I got called to a different meeting at the last minute.
And you notified me, let me know.
Yeah, and then, but I, I'll, um, so I go to the UK on June 20th, and I will not be back until August 16th, uh, and then I leave again on the, on August, or, or July 16th, and I, I go back to London, uh, August 1st, on the outside.
And that's understandable, this isn't, I'm just promoting.
Sure.
If, if you have an opportunity to come, please make time for it, it's totally worth it. Um, uh, August 9th, we're going to have our study session and business meeting, and that will be held at Dixon Middle School, because of the here, the truth and factation here. And for state school, it'll be August 16th, and then the study session again on August 23rd, and then pre-delegate assembly, just put on your calendar, will be Friday, 6:00 p.m. and August 27th, Saturday at 9:00 a.m. And anyone's, anyone's invited to come to that.
So they haven't finalized it yet, but their plan for that pre-delegate assembly is to have, um, different members of our state legislature there that night for a panel of discussion, um, so that should be really good to hear from different representatives on the business about education and the legislature.
Great. Um, can we change the time of the study session on the 23rd?
June?
August 23rd.
August, yeah.
Um, I think we're just keeping everything at 7:30 a.m. because that's. Tom is the first in school, and I really don't want to miss that.
So, and if you need to leave, I, I, so if you need to leave early, we'll understand.
Franklin?
So, I understand, that's a big day, so, okay? I, we've talked about changing the time, and it's just, this is, but if you, if you need to leave early, we understand.
We should just manage the agenda probably for that.
Yeah, we'll just make sure that.
Mm, better.
So, okay, any, uh, let's see, did there, was there a motion to go into executive session?
So one, one quick thing's like quick, Infinity Tours and this is the Provo High reporting hours.
Oh, so one they went to with that, didn't you? And elect to New York.
Around screen break time.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Yeah, at the same time my daughter's there.
And we, that we go into executive session for purposes of discussing negotiations?
Give me a second.
One second.
Okay, all votes in favor indicate with their name. Uh, Melanie Hall, aye.
Jennifer Parker's aye.
DeJensen, aye.
Gina Hale's aye.
Karen McCabe, aye.
Nate Bryson, aye.
Okay, you're, now we go to the questions.
Do we go with, would be easier just to go into executive conference, because they're YouTube streaming and everything?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, we'll move, we'll move, we'll be back.
Who all do you want to participate in?
Um, Travis and Jason.
Thank you.
Um, Travis and Jason, this is the negotiation, so.
Are we cutting my hair, or are we just going straight?
Let me know if you need a motion.
Oh, yeah.
I don't want to miss this. Yes. Yeah, I'm ready.
Yeah. Let me know.
Was that great feedback like that?
I think that might be.
He's my, he's just, he's just Derek's brother. So, so, so at seven o'clock meeting will start whenever they're not.